We will open with an invocation from Mrs. Kupka and then the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Miller. Please rise.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us together to conduct the business of our community this evening. We ask that you be in our hearts by granting us the compassion and the strength to make the difficult decisions for our community. We also ask that you be in our minds by granting us the wisdom to make the best decisions for our community this evening. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Kupka. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Are you sure?
We received a request from the applicant of Walnut Hill for a deferral to the November 14th meeting.
Could you explain what the reason for the deferral is?
Yes. So Walnut Hill has refined or added to their proffer statement, and according to the county's zoning ordinance, if there are changes to the proffer statement that are submitted after the advertisement date, then the matter has to be deferred for re-advertising.
Thank you, Mrs. Slackey. In that case, I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to defer case number 22-02-Z01, conditional rezoning request by Walnut Hill subdivision Development Corporation and NVR Incorporated for a public hearing on November 14th after re-advertising.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries.
My apologies, Mr. Chair. I thought that would be handled at that item.
It's okay. In that case, we will move on to public comment. We'll be having a number of public hearings for which each have decided a public hearing speaking time later in the meeting when we get to those agendas. Since many of you have attended this meeting for the purpose of speaking during the public hearing item for the proposed Walnut Hill rezoning, the public hearing on that matter has been deferred. You may use public comment time to comment on the project, but there will be a future public hearing as well with an opportunity to speak on November 14th. So anyone that would like to speak about the Walnut Hill subdivision could do that tonight and on the 14th. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, and if comments relate to a particular public hearing item, we'd ask that you please hold them until that time. So the floor is now open.
Thank you. My name is Leslie Shelkey. I live on Walnut Hill. My parents bought a property there in 1960. Alan West originally, I think he was the original developer that bought that property when Harry Burl died. He went bankrupt or whatnot, and then it was taken over by Gerald. I find it curious that this amendment has been deferred since both Mr. Gerald and Mr. Hicks are standing in the back of the room. In 2019, the subdivision was shut down due to zoning ordinance, erosion problems, et cetera. They've still not been fixed. The property is a mess. It was a gorgeous, nearly 130-acre farm. I, myself personally, spent my childhood on that farm, sledding the hills, working with Harry Burl, picking up hay. And in the May Planning Commission meeting, James Gerald personally said that this property had bad soil, did not have bad soil. In fact, before they bought it, the land was leased to a farmer who was growing crops in the back where they've now destroyed this land. They destroyed it by the way that they farmed it, by the way they cleared the property. They went in with trenchers and diggers. There's now gullies. They burned this property so that the land is no longer usable. They've made no effort to fix it. They even bragged about it. They bragged about it. Move this dirt. Now, they can't build on it, so they want to, instead of putting down their 42 houses that were originally approved, they want to move to 100. And they keep coming back with proffer after proffer after the proffer to make this more appealing to you. You know, we're going to fix your water system. Well, that water system's been crap since the county bought it 30 years ago because that's when I left Presidential Lakes because I was told I was going to pay $15,000 to get on your septic system. No thanks. So I left and went on my own public, private septic. Sorry, had to be done. So they've ignored the people that actually live on Walnut Hill, which there are four homes, and we pass each other daily. There's one road. We pass each other daily. We block in each other daily. We have FedEx. We have Amazon. We have UPS. We have nurses that go to two homes. There's a lot of traffic on the road. There is a side road. If there's an accident on 301, all that traffic goes down Owens Drive. Then they get on their mats, and they come down our road, and they get on that little side road. So we're completely blocked in, completely. If it's a holiday and there's an accident on 301, all that traffic goes down, and you can't get out our road. You want to put 100 homes down there? We'll never get out, even especially if there's a fire.
My name's Anthony Stats. I live at 9007 Clare Street. A couple of things of public comment that I want to make tonight. First, directed to Ms. Bender, can you give the Shiloh residents an update on the all points broadband and how that is developing? Shiloh residents would like to see. We knew it was going to come sometime soon, but they're stalling, and I want to know why. Now to Walnut Hill. This is a really interesting, I've read all 300 pages. The amount of homes I've seen keep going up and up and up every time they come back. I have a concern, though, reading it says only 22 students out of this whole new division. I don't believe that for one second. And even so, even if it is only 22 students, Dr. Boyd, our county superintendent, has already said it would put an enormous strain on our county. So that fails the sniff test right there. It fails it automatically. We are at a breaking point as a county. You know, we have to grow. It's inevitable. Everyone always says that. But it's about strategic growth, and it's about waiting and seeing, okay, not this time, maybe not next year, but maybe the year after. You know, we can't just keep growing and growing and growing because we're busting at the seams. Three seats to a bus, three children to a seat on the buses. If you went to back-to-school night, if you've been in the school since then, where are our overcapacity at the schools except one school? And we'll be in overcapacity then, soon. Now, kind of finishing my public comments, I want to say this. Anything they keep promising, I don't know why the board always believes these companies when they come before us. You know, I think it's really interesting. You saw this with the Amazon, which is another thing. But anytime a company brings something before the board, the board just believes it. The board just says, oh, 22 new students? Okay, that's the end of it, walking away. No, 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 no. Why don't we compare it with other divisions? Why don't we compare it to other buildings and other massive, massive construction zones like that? We've seen before in this county that if you don't do your research, if you don't go in there and ask the tough questions, you get left with the landfill agreement. That's an absolute mess. You get left with the Amazon agreement, which is going to be an absolute mess. And I want to bring to the board's attention the illegal meeting of the Service Authority at the last meeting when you had two Service Authority members who were on the board, supervisors, who are also on the board of the Service Authority and a Service Authority member. I would like to ask the county attorney to please explain what the penalties are to having an illegal meeting, and if so, I would like to know what was discussed since it was legal meeting. Thank you.
I'm short. I hope you can hear me. I'm Rose Payne. I live at 15123 Hazlenut Lane. I used to have a different address when the board approved the 42 buildings. I worked with this group, changed my driveway, agreed to the easement for 42, not 100. Owens Drive is a small country road. It's not going to be widened because you've got homes on both sides. There's only one entrance in and out of that subdivision. I invite you to drive down Owens Drive, take a left on 624, and look at all the construction. Where do you think all the construction trucks and every... It comes down Owens Drive. Go a little further. I'm next to Chatham subdivision, Monmouth Bayberry butts my farm. I'm the farm right next door. I just cannot imagine how you can approve, how this board can look at one entrance and say it's okay for 800 and some vehicles. I think that's what they said would come out daily, but FedEx has already been in there today. Garbage disposal. Look at all the other traffic that's going to come in there. My concern is traffic. I'm not against growth. I'm also on county water, but that doesn't address the traffic. When we had the fatality up there on Owens Drive going across 206, VDOT considered a stoplight, which really would have been great, but now they put in turn, turn signals. You know who that helps? People going this way. Try to go this way because I have to go that way. I have another farm over in Shiloh. I had to wait to get across there tonight just to get up here. If you are there when the Dahlgren workers come home, forget it. You're going to sit there five or 10 minutes. I can come home, and they are coming across both ways, 218, Owens Drive, then down 206 both ways. It's a nightmare. Please don't add to that. Listen to the people who live there. Come and see for yourself. I've been there 60-plus years or more, and the traffic... You should have seen the traffic this morning. It was steady for two hours. Dahlgren workers go that way. I don't blame them. It's good because they get to go to Be Gate much quicker, but we have sheets, gas truck coming through there. You've got everybody coming down Owens Drive, and then you're going to add 100 buildings? It's insane, and you're not going to just have one person driving. Thank you for listening to me.
I know Ms. Payne, and I'm a little taller than her, so I'll raise this back up. Good evening, Chairman, honorable members of the board. My name is Jay Hicks, and I rise humbly on behalf of Walnut Hill Development Corporation to announce our request for the deferral this evening. Thank you for the approval of that, of tonight's presentation and public hearing on Walnut Hill. We've worked on this project with great diligence across the many interested departments of King George County, working with your capable staff to deliver a final outcome for this partnership that is a win-win for both of us. It has become apparent despite those efforts, there is additional work to be done. We heard the public at the Planning Commission meeting, and we have held a meeting with the community. As such, we feel it is most prudent to ensure the best project possible, to take just a little more time, giving full deference to those remaining concerns, and prove to be the best partner for King George County that we can be now and moving forward. Of course, some of the changes that we've been listening to and are willing to make require an amendment to the proffers, which invariably made tonight's deferral a reality and necessary. So thank you for the support of the deferral, and we look forward to talking to you again.
Hello. I am Gretchen Crook, and I live on Woodstock Road. I have been living in Dahlgren, King George area for 25 years. We live five miles from Walnut Hill. I am against the townhouses. I understand from this neighbor of mine who I met recently, who just spoke the first speaker, that some single-family homes have been approved. What has been approved has been approved. I am against the new agenda for townhouses, 75 of them. Decisions to change a rural community needs to be accepted by the residents in the immediate area. I feel like I should say that again, but I won't. I have asked God, because I heard about this the first time when the first little flyer went up on that area, and my husband and I are very interested in our community, so we stopped to read it. Oh, okay, it's going to be on that date, so I begin to pray. We're going to, we'll be out of town and come back from our trip. Oh, it's tonight. But in the meantime, I prayed. I have asked God to give me favor, and it is He who I always seek. When I see changes, that I see does not promote tranquility, quiet, godliness, and dignity. Those four characteristics are in 1 Timothy, chapter 2. I pray that over everything, many things, and I thought it was, I think it's an appropriate scripture for Owens Road. I'm not, I'm from New York. I never wanted to settle here, but my husband got a job, retired from the military here. He got a job. I said, okay, God, I will trust You. And what did he do since my husband retired from the military? I love it. I love this area. I love being close to the city. We can see National Reagan across the river. We're on the river. I love being close to Virginia Beach. I love the rural. I love the bays, but I don't like townhouses, thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Douglas Stevens. I live at 15299 Ballantray Ave. in King George, Virginia. My property is at the very back, in back of this development that is being proposed for, to be built. I really would like for you guys to come down and, come down and look, walk around in earnest to see what we have found there. And you will probably, and I believe you will come to the same assessment as I have. I am not against the original proposal of roughly, I think it was around 42 homes. Personally, I think you could have a lot, you would get a lot more investment that way than you would by expanding to, say, 100 townhomes. My recommendation is this, Dahlgren is not going to get that big in regards to a military community. Fort Walker, however, is big on a transient level. You have Andrews Air Force Base 30 miles away, which also would be part of a transit. You would transform our community into a transient community. There would be no permanent residents there, and, which would be for limited investment and therefore, you know, limited opportunity for people to actually buy and sell, or buy and put down permanent roots in King George County. When I was originally, when we originally found out about this idea, the big thing is you're going to, animal migration is going to come to my yard, okay? And if it's going to come to my yard, we've got the deers, the birds, the squirrels, the eagles, it's all going to come in my backyard. Am I going to be able to feed them? No. Then please subsidize me if you're going to go through with this proposal. Also, make me a farm, classify me as a farm because I'm going to be coming for my exemption. Anyways, that being said, we have erosion issues, we have space issues, and we will have traffic issues. And with that, I think that there is, there is just no way we can proceed in this matter as it stands today. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Anna Maria Lovell. I live in Presidential Lakes. I want to thank you for your service to the county, and I hope that you make good decisions since you are part of this community. I also want to know when the annual fee for the DCA will be eliminated completely since our taxes were higher. Also, I want to ask you why you didn't wait a little longer for the data center until the matter is better understood. We are worried about all, we worry about all the water and electric power that we will use. People in Caroline County worry about the water levels of the Rapahenik River since farms use the river water for the land. The water levels on the river have got so low that people can walk across by stepping on the exposed rocks. What happens if the data center can no longer get water from the river? They cool their service. Will they use water from our public water system? There were still questions about how the electric power use will affect the cost of electricity. Also, I read yesterday that some of the people running for the board, the supervisors, want to raise taxes and bring in more low-cost housing to this county. It's a safe place to live. How will more low-income housing affect that? We need to start paying down the debt. We need to pay good salaries to our teachers, sheriffs, and fire, rescue squad departments. We need to start building things and concentrate on the debt. In the '70s, '80s, and the '90s, the county have a very little debt. We have great service from our sheriff and fire and rescue squad department. I also want to let you know that bringing in more people into the county will put more stress in our public services. I live close to the fire department. This Sunday, they were very busy. I heard the sirens at least three times. I want to thank them for all the service. Also, I want to thank you for giving me the time to express my opinions. Thank you.
Mr. Dines, do we have anyone online that would like to give public comment?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone receive correspondence to be entered into the record? Mrs. Bender.
Hold on one second. I just received this about 10 minutes ago. I was asked to read this into public comment because the person could not be available. Thank you for the discussions that this person has had with myself, Mr. Collins, and Mr. Granger about the implications of the Service Authority absorption. I do appreciate your time. Question: If the Service Authority is absorbed by the county, would King George citizens be exposed to additional cloud computing, cluster infrastructure, grant matching funds for Amazon from memorandums of understanding with the Service Authority since the Service Authority will be part of King George County? On to economic development districts. I have sent a couple of emails regarding this. I ask that data centers be explicitly excluded from the technology and defense zone ordinances by adding a section to do so. There is no reason to further erode county revenue or need to incentivize data centers by including them in the technology or defense production zones. King George County's Fredericksburg Regional Alliance advertised rate of $1.25 per $100 for PPT, it should be PPT tax, is already extremely low and a very strong incentive. We already have 7.25 million square feet of data center approved and 7 million to follow with the second applicant. King George citizens pay $3.25 per $100 for vehicles. Brian Greagan, Elm Court, Shiloh District. Thank you.
Did anyone else have any correspondence to be entered into the record? In that case, I will close public comment, and we will move on to reports from members of the board. Mrs. Bender.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone who came and spoke. I find it interesting tonight, this topic is on the agenda today. I attended what is called, and, hold on a second, folks, if you want to listen for a second, because I'm going to address your stuff. I always love when I hear people talk, and I hope they stay to listen to us so we can hear from us. No, that's okay. Well, I wish you would stay. So I'm always, I love talking to folks. Well, today I actually attended an educational summit on housing attainability. And so I guess, you know, a bigger conversation we have to have with the community is, there is a need and a discussion in the state and all over the United States about workforce housing, affordable housing, whatever you want to call it. It has different names, different definitions. Unfortunately, even though we would love our community to stay away, it always has been, is people look at housing in different ways, people look at families in different ways, and that, just absorbing the amount of information I got for a full day's conference is a lot. But the big thing is, is communities have to look at different ways to give housing to folks, be it for seniors, be it for young folks, be it for those that are disabled. So it's a further conversation that has come up, and Walnut Hill seems to be at the front of the conversation because it's on our agenda right now. And so I would love to have conversation, what I learned with you guys, and, but note, it's not a comment, give and take, but I would love, you look me up online, and I can give you a card. Oh, okay. Just leave it right there. That's okay.
So I'm sorry, ma'am, right now, we, this...
No, no, no. Hold on, ma'am. I'll give you a card, Mr. Johnson. After my report, I'll give you a card. Sorry, that, I just, there are policies, rules, and agendas. I appreciate, we're not, I love to, thank you. So anyway, lost my train of thought. We'll get back on that. But I'll give a report a little later. It was a lot to absorb in the conference, but it's something I've thought about, having some town hall, more town halls after the election, because people are absorbing a lot with all the different, people running for different offices and all the conversation right now. It is after election, I'm going to set up something probably in December, so we could actually have a community conversation about all the many different challenges and the different ideas and the different things that are going on in the state and ideas that are proposed to make us all a better community. So you will be hearing that from me soon, sometime in December. I'd like to set up to have, actually have a conversation with the community, because as people know, I like, like to talk. I like to talk to the community. I enjoy interacting with folks. The next thing I want to bring up, and I lost my train of thought, so just bear with me for a moment. So I serve on FAMPO, and I also serve, which is the Fredericksburg Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, a lot of acronyms, and Ms. Kupka and I serve on the George Washington Regional Commission. So why bring this up tonight? Because it came up at our meeting at FAMPO, and I'm bringing, I already talked to Chairman Granger about this, is last year, and this has happened for several years, state delegates have brought forth creating a Fredericksburg Transportation Authority, whatever that name is. And basically, we created an authority, Richmond has one, Hampton Roads has one, and so does Northern Virginia. We're sort of in a donut hole. But with the way smart scale and VDOT funding is done, you have to have pools of money. And unfortunately, the locality match is getting higher, and it's up to 20% in some of this. So if you think of a big project, it could be 30, 40, $50 million. Coming up with a local match of 20%, that's a lot of money that we just don't have. So a transportation authority of whatever name it is, is a way to come up with that pot of money. But unfortunately, we're sort of in a region with Stafford, Fredericksburg, Spotsy, folks that have a lot more money than us. So this is an idea of some kind of tax to help have a kitty of money to be used for those kind of projects. Now, what I'm bringing forth to my colleagues, because I'm going to need some, Ms. Kupka and I need some feedback because it's coming up at our GWRC meeting on the following Monday. And right now, after folks get elected in November, they come up with legislative agendas or bills they would like to pass in the State House. Well, this stuff is already being worked on, and unfortunately, the bills and that are being written, and we're having no say. And so this, whatever they decide on by people that are, some of them aren't even our elected officials. One of them is an elected official of a small little parcel up in northern Stafford, and he's part of the push for this. So GWRC and their staff in FAMPO have come up with a way to maybe help craft a legislation so we at least have a say. But I've told FAMPO yesterday, I can't come back and give you any recommendation from King George until I get consensus from my board, at least feedback, because there are different tax options, there's different ratios for how much money would go to the different localities, and are we even interested in this kind of thing? So I would ask my colleagues that I, we get some feedback before Monday, so, and look at the material that I submitted to them from, there were PowerPoint presentations that were given yesterday. that were given yesterday, because unfortunately, this is being forced on us. Once again, as I always complain about, a state mandate, we have no say in it, is being proposed and sort of forced on us. So, at least, if this happens, we have some say in how, what kind of tax. They're talking about extra on the sales tax, extra on a whole bunch of things. So, I would just ask my colleagues if Ms. Kupka and I could have some feedback, if you would like to be part of the conversation for next Monday, because it is coming up. So, and if the public, if you would like to look at the information, you could go online to the FAMPO website or the George Washington Regional Commission website, and the PowerPoint should be on there. And the meeting I went to today, I asked them if they could put their PowerPoints up there so you can read them, and the video they shot of all the breakout sessions and the whole conference as a whole. So, if you'd like to watch hours of video, it's there for you to look at. I also want to bring up, Mr. Stats brought up about All Points Broadband. As Mr. Granger and I said at our last meeting, we had gone on a tour with Mr. Innis, and one of their biggest challenges is the Dominion approving applications to put up new poles, and it's kind of slowed them down. But as I was just informed by Ms. Fish, on November 14th, Mr. Innis from All Points Broadband is supposed to be coming to our meeting to give us an update. So, anybody who would like to ask questions, please come and give your public comment on our next meeting. I know it's going to be action-packed, but I, please come and, or reach out to me so I can ask the questions, because I would love to ask the questions to them. It was asked also about data centers. I have asked all those questions, and I still haven't gotten all the answers, but I will tell you, I did see an article recently about the data, the PJM, and how they're looking at the transmission lines, and they're already starting to look at those transmission lines. Right now, the ones they have posted are coming from West Virginia, but we don't know where else they're coming from. There's, there's a lot of points they could come into this county, so that's something we really need to be watching, and a lot of it is going to be fleshed out over, in the spring and in the summer of next year. And then, I will go, last but not least, earlier, we talked about the Service Authority, and I was very vocal in a nay. I think we shouldn't be rushing, and we have to flesh out a little bit more. I mentioned a co-op that was just brought out to me today. I will do some research for the next meeting and come up and see what I found out. Maybe it's not a good idea, but it's another option. This is all, a lot of this is being spurred by economic development, and I just, I understand that, because the customer shouldn't have to pay for all the economic development, and whatever was done in the past is in the past, but we need to make sure we do it right. We have a timeline that we stick to, we have it figured out in a transmission, transition plan, the organization, who's going to be on the board, it all needs to be fleshed out. But I don't want to make poor decisions like, that were unfortunately made in the past, that we got into this mess, and I want to make sure that the public knows that eventually the costs will be shared, and it just needs to, I wish we have more public input on that so, you know, we can explain it and have some town halls, but I don't think that's going to happen. But I just want to explain in this meeting why a vote in no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Binder. Mr. Collins?
Good evening. Nice to see everyone out. Ms. Binder, you mentioned the word tax like nine times, so I'm not for any taxes off the top for the rest of the information. Next, I want to go to the Service Authority. So, the Service Authority about the county taking over the Service Authority. There's still a lot of unanswered questions that need to be answered, and if you were at the Service Authority, or you'll have the opportunity to see the Service Authority meeting when it's posted on the web, you'll see that they want to do a transition before they even know what, what the, what they're encumbering. So, there's still a lot of questions. So, the folks that are on the authority now, the way that it was presented is, is that the debt will stay with those people, and any future debt will be with those people. So, the cost of, they call it economic development, but I call it Amazon, is on, on the backs of the members of the Service Authority. They mentioned in the meeting about antennas, and they're getting, they're negotiating $40,000 a year for fees from two antennas, from two companies. I would like to see those, that money go towards the debt and not just spend in other ways. I'm very concerned about the Service Authority and what that means to the county residents. It's not working. Giving it to the county is not going to work. There are plans available. We need, we still need to flush all that out. Walnut Hill. So, what I'm worried about on Walnut Hill is the impacts, the impacts on the schools. So, there was a study done by the former superintendent that gave a number for these 42 houses of, I think around 20 students. Well, that, 40 houses and 20 students don't, don't make sense. And with the 75 other houses, there's still not going to be 20. So, I reached out to the superintendent yesterday and asked about this specifically, and he said, yes, the former superintendent did say that number, but that number is not accurate today. He advised me this evening that he had, he was, I had a meeting with Mr. Granger and Mr. Parker, and that they had the numbers, and they will give it to us tonight, the numbers on how many students they're expecting. I haven't received that from you.
We were, we, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr.- I didn't have the meeting with Dr. Boyd and Mr. Parker.
That's, that's what he told me. I can, I can show you a text if you'd like later on, but anyhow.
Is it talking about the capacity for the-
Okay.
So, this was his presentation that Dr. Boyd had given a couple of weeks ago at, I believe Ms. Binder was there as well for that presentation.
Okay, I wasn't. So, the total number is, this is the numbers in enrollment capacity. So, what, so what I'm asking is, how many students are they expecting from Walnut Hill at the 75 townhouses and 42 homes? So, if you do the math, that's going to be probably 200 or 300 students. So, the impacts will be very steep on the schools. The other impacts are the Service Authority. I know that Walnut Hill has addressed some of the impacts for the Service Authority. I did want to ask Ms. Payne and Mr. Stevens to enter on their property, because I would like to go look at it, but they left, so I, I didn't get permission. Mr. Pankati, can you get permission for me to enter onto their property with you to look at that, what their, their concerns are, please? And I'm very curious, I'm not familiar with the 2019 zoning violations from Walnut Hill, and they haven't been addressed. I would, I would like to have more information on that, Mr. Pankati also, please, within the next couple of days. Mr. Stats, I'm interested in the question you asked just about, about the illegal meeting that was held, it just seemed to be breezed over and nothing mentioned. Ms. Lackey, do you have a comment on that illegal meeting of the Service Authority?
Since there were some folks who didn't stick around for the end of the meeting or may not have watched through the, the meeting at the end of the last Board of Supervisors meeting, there was a disclosure made in the closed-meeting certification. I'll go ahead and read that again here so that everybody is aware of what that, what that statement was. So, upon the motion to return to open meeting, there was a certification by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting with the following exception. Alan Parker, the chairman of the Service Authority, was included in the initial discussion with representatives of the development prospect, particularly with regard to possible negotiation of additional water services infrastructure. When it was mentioned that two other members of the Service Authority were present, although in their capacities as supervisors, Mr. Parker was immediately excluded from the meeting, and there was no deviation from the substance of matters stated in the motion to convene closed meeting. An internal discussion about the proposed local incentive package was continued after Mr. Parker was excused from the meeting. He was not included in that discussion. So, that was the statement that was acknowledged and read into the record at the prior meeting.
So, if my understanding is, you can go into an illegal closed meeting as long as you come back and said, I just went into an illegal closed meeting. Is that what you're saying? Because the disclosure was done after the illegal meeting, and the, the material that was presented during that illegal meeting would not, not be available for public to understand what happened and what, the minutes of that?
So, there are rules for closed-meeting proceedings. It was a closed meeting of the Board of Supervisors, so, and it was inadvertent, unintentional oversight, that there was one member of the Service Authority present, and it was not realized at the time that that would be three of the five members of the Service Authority. So, as required by law, the, the members of the Board of Supervisors, with the exception, of course, of yourself, Mr. Collins, certified that the closed meeting was correct, other than that one deviation, which was read into the record and stated as such.
So, let me ask a question. Is there, is there a penalty for going in an unlawful meeting?
There are penalties for willful violations, which I do not believe was the case in this instance.
Okay, and I guess that, what, what makes it willful or unwillful?
I cannot advise on legal advice contrary to the interest of the Board of Supervisors as a majority or to the, the Board of Directors of the Service Authority.
Okay, so, I guess that brings me back around to what I've been talking about for some time, about transparency, about this board and the Service Authority board. If you notice how many meetings are conducted in closed session in regards to Amazon, because that's the only business that's been entertained, and how many meetings are back there, and the public knows nothing about it. And then, there was a meeting that was held willfully or unwillfully, that it was illegal, but that, these things seem to be acceptable for this board and the Board of the Service Authority. It's not acceptable to me. I did not certify from that meeting. So, I'd like to have some of these questions answered for the public, and I see there's another closed meeting for tonight for some of the same things. So, Amazon has already come, is he, is already, they already got rezoned. There's, the business interests of theirs for any incentives should be public. When you are giving away tax dollars to companies, then the public has a right to know what the government's doing. Just like if the government is using your tax money to buy property, you should know how much the property is and what's the governmental use. So, we'll have a closed session in about a piece of property tonight, and I haven't had either one of those questions answered either. Why would it be a lawful closed meeting when those two items have not even been discussed? So, again, I caution all the citizens to be involved, to please speak louder about these transparency issues. I've spoke as loud as I can and in as many ways as I can, but obviously, it's not, it's not working out so good. So, we'll see what happens after November, and maybe we can make some changes to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mrs. Kupka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to everyone who joined us here this evening to provide your public comment. So, with regard to the Walnut Hill matter, I did speak with a representative of the developer yesterday and expressed my concerns regarding the impact, possible impacts of the project. I am optimistic that the applicant has requested the deferral. I hope that is in anticipation, as was stated, for some revised proffers. We'll see if some of my concerns are alleviated by those. Ms. Lavelle, the vehicle license fee, so, the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office briefed us at the last meeting. They're collecting data for us, so we're waiting. Our financial system is a bit difficult to navigate. That's part of why we are upgrading it, but once we get some information from them, I'm sure the board will contemplate what the next steps are, and we appreciate their work in collecting the data that we've requested. And then, one other comment, so the comment was made, the 1960s and 1970s, the county was not in debt. And I just want to make sure everyone is aware, according to the Weldon Cooper Center for Research at the University of Virginia, in 1960, the census indicated that King George County had 7,243 citizens. The 2020 census indicated that we now have 26,723 citizens. And unfortunately, over time, more people have moved here. I moved here myself almost 20 years ago, and in my opinion, the development of our infrastructure and investments in our community did not keep up with the population growth. And then, moving on to my report, on Saturday, October 14th, I attended the King George Fall Festival Parade. I want to thank the committee for the wonderful job and everyone who braved the weather. To me, it looked like there were just as many folks out, whether at the high school, on the parade route, in the parade, as there has been in beautiful weather. So, thanks for everyone for braving the weather and coming out and celebrating our community, and it was especially great. I want to thank the committee for the increase in food vendors this year. I know in the past, there have been complaints about not enough food vendors offering food at the festival proper at the high school. That evening, I attended the Rappahannock Area YMCA 50th Anniversary Gala, and I believe Mr. Stonehill was there as well, and perhaps he'll make comment in his report. And it, so it was the 50th anniversary for the Rappahannock Area YMCA. It was the 20th anniversary for the Spotsylvania County YMCA. It was the 15th anniversary for our own King George County YMCA, and it was the 10th anniversary for the Caroline County YMCA. So, I want to say congratulations to the YMCA. Yesterday, Monday, October 16th, I attended the Sheriff's Office reaccreditation. I want to thank the sheriff and his entire staff for their work, and I know the work continued today in reviewing the Internal Affairs files and so forth, the policies. It was impressive to see the variety of equipment our tax dollars supplemented by grant funding have brought to improve law enforcement services in our community. And then, yesterday evening, I attended the Department of Social Services Administrative Board meeting. DSS is hosting their annual holiday program again this year, so please contact them if you would like to sponsor a family for Thanksgiving dinner and/or Christmas. And then, also, another note from that meeting, the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank is holding their second annual open house on Saturday, November 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at their warehouse at 480 Central Road. And crisis assistance for heating will become available starting November 1st through March 15th. So, for those who need emergency heating assistance, you will find some information on both the state website and our local DSS website. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kupka. Mr. Stonehill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks, everybody, for coming on out. Walnut Hill. So, Walnut Hill has been going on for years and years and years and years and years, and it was, you know, unfortunately, badly put together the first time, and now, they're trying to figure out what to do with, you know, what do we, what's the saying, how to put lipstick on a pig? You know, how did, how are they going to fix a bad situation? So, having it being in my district, I'm getting a lot of phone calls about it, emails, talking to a lot of people about it, and it's traffic, 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 traffic. I have driven Owens Drive, Dalgrin Road, that whole big square around that area for years and years and years, and let me tell you, I know what the traffic is like there. That is my, my greatest concern is the traffic for that road. It's bad now. I'm very concerned what it's going to be. School issues, I agree. I think the amount of folks that they say are going to come to the school is way off. You know, service authority issues, yes, it's going to be a lot of, you know, hookups and things that would be good for them. and things that would be good for them, but there's still a lot of, there's still a lot of work to be done. And I have been in touch with the Walnut Hill groups, some of their people, almost weekly here for a while now. And I'm glad that they are going to hold off on it now to, you know, talk to more of the folks about it, you know, get some more information. And I'm glad that the folks came out and gave their public comments tonight so they could listen to it as well. They might be having another town hall meeting for people. It was just another idea that was kicked around to answer more questions. But I think tonight was good that they are going to hold off and, you know, look at their numbers and see what they can do. So, you know, I wish them the best of luck, and we're going to try to make it work the And moving on to my report, I just wanted to also say thank you to everybody for Fall Festival. I was unfortunately not being able to attend it because I had to work my other job. And the folks that I did talk to afterward said it was one of the best festivals I've ever seen. I was told that even with the rain and everything, it was just a huge crowd, which was just great. Seems to be getting bigger and bigger and every year. But just thanks for everybody that came out. Sheriff Giles, you and your crew standing out in the rain. I remember how fun that is. So I certainly appreciate everybody that, you know, that came in to pull extra duty for that. And as Mrs. Cupka did say, we did go to the YMCA event, which was fantastic. And I want to see all of you out there next year for the event. It was a great event, you know, for the 50th anniversary for the local, you know, the regional YMCA. I mean, it was just fantastic. I mean, great showing, great music. I mean, the things that the Y does all the way around there is, it's amazing. And, you know, I remember when our Y was not here. And, I mean, the things that they do for King George alone, much less all the other, the regionals, is fantastic. Great event. And like I said, I want to see everybody out there next year. And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. All right. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone who came out to provide a comment. Walnut Hill subdivision, as we said, we will be pushing that public hearing to the 14th, so I anticipate we'll see some familiar faces out again at the next meeting. But I do appreciate sticking around to give the comment tonight. And I do agree that I think there's definitely some concerns in regards to our infrastructure that we have in place in order to support an increase in density. Anytime there's a request to increase density for more homes, that is obviously something that comes into play. We do have our capacity at all of our elementary schools, which means any new students come in, and that's definitely impactful. And that is a major consideration, obviously. What can we take on? So obviously, we'll wait and see what's brought forth, but, you know, those are things I still think about, and those aren't going away right away. I know that, obviously, we're looking to build a new preschool. We'll need a new elementary school in the near future as well, just to house the students. So, you know, those are things that we're looking to do, and it would make the opportunity for higher density residential more available in that situation. But there are definitely challenges right now that I think have a big impact to being able to move forward with those kinds of projects in general. So other than that, on Saturday, October 14th, again, as my colleagues said, I would like to thank the Fall Festival, everyone involved in that, the Fall Festival Committee, the Sheriff's Department, the Fire and Rescue Department. A lot of people have to get together to make it work. It was a rainy day, and there are a lot of people out there, and making sure that it happened and that citizens could be safe and enjoy that time. And the parade was fantastic, even with the rain, and great music and great food. And so just thank you to everyone that made that happen and for all those who came out and enjoyed it regardless of the fact that it was raining. So thank you for all the citizens that came out. This past Monday, I attended an FRA meeting. There was an update on the tech transfer, so they've had a company come in and do an evaluation of patents. It sounds like they found about 24 base patents that sound like they could be possibly marketed for commercial use. And so those could be sent out, and those hopefully would help to draw in more economic development in our region, as maybe a business might look and say, hey, I'd like to get involved in trying to leverage a patent and be close to the base. So we'll see where that goes, but there's definitely that kind of opportunity. And then this morning, I did have the opportunity to meet with Dr. Boyd and Mr. Bush from the school board. So there, we've had a couple of discussions in the past, and tonight I'm bringing it up. I'm sorry I didn't have it as an action item or as a discussion item. The meeting happened today, and so it was a little bit last minute. But, so we currently have the payroll for the schools is that employee actually falls under the county. And there's some challenges in regards to logistics for the schools, because that individual has to then work with school board employees, and then they're separated, and so there's challenges there. And so there is a request to see if this board would be willing to move forward with moving that position so that payroll person who does the payroll for the schools would then fall under the schools and be co-located with the schools, so that it would ease that interaction and make that a little bit easier and facilitate that situation. So I'm bringing that before my board members, my colleagues here, to see if there's a willingness to have the staff work with the school board or the superintendent in order to see about making that work. I believe if we were to say we would move forward with that, the schools would have to, I think, on Monday, then move forward as well with accepting that situation as well. And then I think we'd also look to maybe transfer the funds so that instead of being under the county, they fund under the schools, the salary wouldn't change, anything along those lines. So I'm just asking my colleagues to see if they'd be willing to entertain that request from the schools.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So would the schools be taking on all the fringe benefits and so forth of that employee?
Yes. Everything, all costs would, it would just be transferred over. So any funds that are going to cover that from the county side would then be transferred to the schools. And then, as I said, it's not that the pay range or anything has changed, it's just moving it so that it falls under the schools for their authority.
Okay. And while I have the mic, could I get when the community meetings are in Bayberry so I could attend, please?
If you have the information, come on up. You can give the, it's okay. No, it's fine. Go ahead. If you have it, feel free to share it.
We do not have a date or time or location set, but we freely communicate with the Planning Department and the County Administrator, and we'll communicate with them to let you all know when that occurs.
So thank you. I don't get that information from the County Administrator, so could you send it to my email, my county email, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Collins, this Fish sent an email to you and to all the other board members about the information you gave, asking about the void. But that information was sent this morning, so I take offense to the comment that you like to see the information. Now, that's your opinion, but I do believe you.
I do believe the information would.
So this is my, this is actually my board report, so we're going to end this now. Sir, thank you for that. If you do provide it to staff, though, we'll make sure all the board members get it. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just to interject, if there is interest on the part of board members of attending a community meeting, I request that you communicate with me or Ms. Fish so that we can avoid a recurrence of an unintentional public meeting of more than, of three or more members.
Yes, ma'am. That's a wise decision. Thank you, Ms. Lackey. Okay. So I'll ask Ms. Cupka, as far as my request about the payroll employee position. Mr. Stonehill, okay, I think we have a majority that are in favor of it. So Mr. Miller and Ms. Lackey, if you could work with the schools, assuming on Monday that they would also agree to this, work on facilitating that, and I assume we'll have an action, and come back to amend our budget and move those dollars across, and it'll just be an accounting kind of a thing. So, Mr. Bush, I see you back there. So, yes, sir. Thank you. That is the end of my report, and so we will move on to the consent agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman, before you go, the consent agenda.
We're going to the consent agenda now, at this point, so.
Well, Ms. Lackey made a statement, I think I should, I should have an opportunity rebuttal as a board member.
She was just giving advice. So we are moving on to the consent agenda at this time. It was my board report. The board report is done. We're going to move on to the consent.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries. Constitutional officers, Ms. Hart.
Good evening, board members, Mr. Miller, Ms. Lackey. Our September 2023 cigarette report from July of 2023 to present day, the sale is $564,923. And the total packs of cigarettes sold, $346,677.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Hart? Sorry.
Mr. Chair, just can I, can I get the cumulative number again? I missed it.
Number sold.
Tax dollar figure.
The tax figure, how much we've. Thank you.
Ms. Hart, is that, and that's from when?
September.
Okay.
We're still working in October.
July through September?
July of '23, our new fiscal year through today. That's the number of sales.
Okay. So it's the fiscal year this year?
Yes, the fiscal.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Sheriff?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For my constitutional officer report, I'm happy to report that on September 11th, the seized cigarettes that we've had in our holding, in our evidence room, were destroyed, so we no longer have those. On September 21st, 2023, Deanna Price from the Commissioner of the Revenue and Deputy Simon conducted inspections on stores selling cigarettes in King George County. All the stores except two were in compliance with the King George County cigarette tax ordinance. In previous inspections, two tobacco stores, the Tobacco Hut and Vape located at 7975 Kings Highway in King George, and the Tobacco Hut and Vape located at 4863 James Madison Parkway in Dahlgren, were non-compliant in submitting the required inventory forms provided by the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office. As you know, this form is required to be submitted by the 20th of each month. Last month, Deputy Simon issued two summonses, one for each store under the county code 14-207, which is titled Report and Records. The reports for each store were submitted shortly after the summons were issued for the month of July. However, both stores again failed to submit this form for the month of September. The clerk in the Tobacco Hut and the Vape spoke little English, but was able to call the owner, Thayer Salye. Deanna spoke to Salye and again asked for the paperwork. On September 25th, 2023, Deputy Simon reported that Deanna stated that Salye did submit the paperwork, and both stores were then in compliance. So I do have one more report that I'd like to give, but before I move on to the next one, are there any questions in reference to the cigarettes?
Does anyone have any questions for Sheriff about the cigarettes? Go ahead, Sheriff.
All right. First off, I'd like to thank Supervisor Cupka and Mr. Metzler for attending our accreditation yesterday. And as Supervisor Cupka stated in her report yesterday, the assessors from VLEPSI, which is the acronym for Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission, arrived at the Sheriff's Office to inspect over 180 folders with over 2,900 points of compliance to ensure that the Sheriff's Office has been compliant for the past four years with VLEPSI. The team did tour the Sheriff's Office and a static display where we displayed our special use vehicles. I'm proud to say that the assessor stated that the static display in the tour was the best they've been through. After the tour, the assessor sat down to review the 180 folders containing 2,009 airports of compliance. And they didn't finish today, so they're going to be back tomorrow morning to finish up. But I will say that we haven't had any returns, and any questions that they had, we were able to fulfill their request. So, so far, so good. So I hope I'm not jinxing myself, but we'll get through tomorrow as well. So at this point in time, that completes my report, and do you have any questions I could try to answer?
Go ahead, Ms. Binder.
I don't have a question, but I had wrote this down to mention this next time, but I'm going to say this here still here. I want to compliment your staff, because I was at a football game a couple of weeks ago, and there was an incident, and the professionalism of your staff and how they handled the incident, I made sure at the past football game, I went up and thanked them for their professionalism. So I want to thank you personally and your deputies for what they do, especially in tense situations where emotions are high. So thank you very much.
Thank you for those kind words. I very much appreciate it. I appreciate that. I'll pass it on.
So Sheriff, I see on Facebook that you hired a Terrence J. Collins. He's no relation to me, but I'm sure you'd like to meet him.
Well, he's in the academy right now.
Okay.
So when he gets done, I'll make sure you have a face-to-face.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
We have the Treasurer's Office next.
Good evening. I'll be reading the receipts and expenditures report for September 2023. The beginning balance, $40,481,409.3. With an ending balance of $30,466,307.12.
Thank you. Did anyone have any questions? Thank you so much. Mr. Miller, could you make sure that this gets added to the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Lackey, County Attorney's Report.
Yes, I have a couple of brief items. Firstly, this week, the proceeds from the settlement concerning the Sedgwick Crossing litigation were received by the county. And then the second update I have just came in today from the Attorney General's Office. There were, there were sufficient funds to pay the legal fees associated with the third round distributors opioid settlement. And so there is going to be a dispersment of funds that were held in reserve for possible legal fee expenditures. So the county should be receiving, very near term, an additional $4,359.1. That is all I have to report.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Lackey? Mr. Collins?
Ms. Lackey, I just want to make, I want to clarify that when a, three or more members of the Board of Supervisors are meeting together to conduct business, is, it has to be a called meeting. If three or more are meeting together and are not discussing county business, they are allowed to do that, correct?
Actually, there was a Virginia Supreme Court opinion that was recently issued that kind of disrupted the understanding of when a community meeting could possibly turn into discussion of public business. And so I'd be happy to report back confidentially to you all on the conclusions from that opinion.
Okay. Just, I also would be curious of like the VACO meetings, how would they fit into that category also? Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Cupka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Lackey, can we get an update, I asked two meetings ago, with regard to the status of the noise ordinance, please?
Yes. So in the to-do list, updates from last meeting, there was a meeting with myself, with Assistant County Attorney Jessica Washington, with Sheriff Giles, and with the Community Development Director, Mr. Panikati. I would say two and a half, three weeks ago, we met to discuss the internal draft, and we received some comments. And Ms. Washington and I have been reviewing some additional ordinances for possible additions to that provision.
So then, once a draft is ready, will that be sent then to the sheriff for comments? Because I think that was the direction that we provided.
Yes, yes, ma'am. So Sheriff Giles received a copy of the working draft, and so we have received some comments, and so we're working through those comments to, in fact, possibly add some additional provisions.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I continue to be contacted by citizens with regard to the status of the noise ordinance. So thank you very much.
Anyone else have any questions for Ms. Lackey? Okay. We'll move on to the Dahlgren Heritage Museum 10th Anniversary Resolution. I will hand it over to Mrs. Binder to present this. I will hand it over to Mrs. Binder to present this.
Thank you very much, Chair. I was asked to come up with a resolution, as some of you might not know, but they're very vocal in the community and a great organization, the Dahlgren Heritage Museum. As a board member, somebody serves on their committee, their museum committee, as part of our role. And that's been me for the whole time I've been on the board, and I'm honored because I like history, as everyone knows. So with that, they have their 10th anniversary and they have a special event on Saturday. They're going to have a lot of activities. Hopefully, it doesn't rain out, but I want to read the resolution, and I asked the chair to put it on here so we could pass a resolution that we can, they can hand out and present in the museum, which we, we do for lots of folks. So here is the resolution. Whereas collecting, preserving, and exhibiting the history, traditions, heritage, and culture of King George and its residents is a vital part of creating and sustaining a sense of community. Whereas Dahlgren is a prominent area in King George County, Virginia, and as such, has provided significant contributions to local history. And whereas the Dahlgren Heritage Foundation identified the importance of sharing the stories of the Dahlgren community in 2010 and began the process of creating the Dahlgren Heritage Museum in 2012 until it opened in 2013. Whereas the Dahlgren Heritage Museum has been providing the King George community with education, outreach, recreation, resources, exhibits, artifacts, and more for 10 years, whereas the museum has been successful in its efforts to increase engagement among the community, averaging 1,000 visitors a year. Whereas the foundation has maintained quality partnerships with community organizations such as the University of Mary Washington to continue to bring quality information and research to the museum. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value of the Dahlgren Heritage Museum and the Dahlgren Heritage Foundation as added to King George County for its residents and its visitors. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on October 21st, 2023, the King George County Board of Supervisors hereby recognize and celebrate the outstanding accomplishments of the Dahlgren Heritage Foundation and applaud the Dahlgren Heritage Museum for providing meaningful contributions to King George County over the past 10 years, adopted hopefully today, but it will be presented on the 21st day of October 2023 during their celebration. And before I make the official motion, I just want to thank the members of the Dahlgren Heritage Museum and the foundation for the good work they've done. They give a lot of scholarship money out. They, they're kind of been at the forefront of reimagining a museum online, and they've done a lot of research. And folks have taken tips in other areas for them, what they've done, and, and they're still continuing to work. They continue to, to try to get involved students to be part of their organization and learn archival research. And I'm very proud to be a board member. So I make a motion to adopt this resolution to be presented on Saturday.
Second.
Do you have a motion properly seconded? Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Binder. Okay, we will move on to presentations, Jazz in the Country After Action Report.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and board members. My name is Joan Waters with Jazz in the Company. I am accompanied by my cohorts in crime fellow board members, Larry Robinson and Randy Pryor. And to start things off, we have a short video of our fourth annual festival that was held on August 26.
It is Kyle on the mic. We're here for the Fourth Jazz in the Country Festival. Now, I'm your host. I'm so excited to be out here, man. Look at the view, the weather, the sun, the skin is skinning, the vibes are vibing, and the jazz is jazzin', baby, all right? Listen, the people are out here, they have their seats, umbrellas, they're feeling good, feeling cool. We have vendors, food, everything for you right here to enjoy this amazing day. So it's only one place to be, and that's our Jazz in the Country Festival. So if you're not here, you're missing out. But I got to go, it's time to get on the stage, man. Bye.
How's everybody doing out there? Ready to have a good time? Thank you so much for coming. We open in prayer, as we close as you leave, I pray God's blessings, I pray God's favor, I pray God's protection over you and your family. To God be the glory for all the things he's doing on my life. See you next year. It was a great day, a great time. So am I correct that you all have copies of the presentation? All right, so the interest of time, I'll just sort of pick out highlights to, to mention. Our attendees are very diverse, as well as our performers. From Virginia alone, there were about 15 towns that, that came out in Maryland, 20, and beyond. I didn't get to meet the person from California. I'm not sure who that person was. We're also in the local news. The Freelance Star every year supports us with articles in the paper. We went digital again this year, so we weren't killing any trees. So that was really convenient for everyone who participated. It's also on our website, so it can be downloaded and viewed. We were grateful for Holiday and Express, who supported us with discount for anyone connected with the festival. So there were about 20 rooms that were utilized by staff, by guests, and performers. Of course, we did next page, thank you, we did press release early on to talk about our first ever free youth music workshop, which really was the top of the list of one of the projects we wanted to do. So we also have a short video highlighting that, if you would. I'm with Jazz in the Country. We are a local nonprofit, and we sponsor jazz festivals every year here in King George. And one of the goals that we've had was to have free music workshops for area kids. So you're the first, and we're excited to be here, and we just know you have a great time. So let me introduce Paula Atherton, who will conduct the workshop. She is one of our special guest performers tomorrow, at tomorrow's festival. So let's hear it for Paula.
Thank you, Joan. Hey, everybody, how you doing? Yeah, I'm very excited to be here with you today. If there's a dream that you want, there's something that you want, don't limit yourself. Just dream your biggest dream and go get it. Because if you work hard, you can have it. I recorded five albums before my sixth, which came out during COVID in 2020, and that's when I got my first number one on Billboard. Because I didn't give up. If you want something, just go after it and don't take no for an answer, and don't give up. Mr. Morrison told me that you played through the B-flat blues recently, or at least some students did. Whoever's going to tell me the answer to the question, I want to know, tell me like the formula in numbers. Don't tell me in notes in any key. That's the way you want to think. You want to think globally. Because if you know the formula for a scale, you can just take the numbers and put it in any key. Did you have a good time? That's, that's really nice. It's been my pleasure today to spend some time with you guys. I hope I get to see you again. I think a few people are going to come from this tomorrow to the concert, so that's going to be great. And listen, keep playing. Don't ever stop playing. So many people say to me, you know, I used to play whatever in high school, and then I, I just dropped it and I don't play anymore, and I, I never should have done that. That's what they always say, I never should have done that. So don't do it, okay? Just keep playing, keep swinging. Thank you, everybody. Great job.
So what was really great about putting the workshop together was that Paula, in the midst of us negotiating her contract to perform, offered to do the youth music workshop. And it's something that she does around the country. So she drove down a few days early from New York to actually conduct it. The school was excited, the kids were excited, and it's just the first of many that, that we plan to hold. And actually, we'd like, King George High School has a jazz ensemble, so we are hoping we can get them to perform next year at the festival. So moving on to marketing, as you know, we continue to utilize more and more digital marketing, social media, as well as billboards. That is pictured in the top middle of, of the screen. So we had four billboards this year. Last year, we had two, so we had two in Maryland and two also here in Virginia. We appreciate support with Freelance Star. We also use recreation news, print and electronic marketing, billboards and signs, as I mentioned, community outreach. We try to take part in a lot of festivals here in Virginia, as well as Maryland and DC area. The next page shows the marketing targets that we worked our deals with Freelance Star, who also ran a banner ad on their website, as well as articles and ads in their paper. So this list on the left are some of the specific areas that we targeted. And actually, we increased that number, I think there's about 13 there, we increased that to 50 within a 50-mile radius of King George. So we're getting the word out. And next to that is the website stats. So over 12,000 people visited our website just in the month of August. Now, if they would all show up. As always, top sources that drive people to our website, people do Google searches for jazz festivals, outdoor festivals, jazz in the country specifically. Also, visit King George website, Facebook, et cetera, et cetera. So now the financial overview, the grant that we get from King George County enables us to utilize expanded and innovative marketing and social media research. We're learning a lot more as we go each year. So comparing 2022 and this year, the marketing spend this year was about $4,000 more than last. Ticket sales, roughly the same, four, 5,000. Revenue was a tiny bit less, and I think that part of that was because we had fewer retail vendors this year. So we are becoming the talk of the town. While word of mouth still tops the list in sharing information about the festival, all of the marketing, the radio ads, the social media, the roadside signs and banners, all of that are ways that people find out about jazz in the country. And we still have people come and say, I've never heard of you. How is it I've never heard of you? So it's all good. We're planting seeds every year to expand that. And as our popularity grows, we steadily receive, we've already received requests from artists from all over the country who want to perform. And of course, those who come want to come back. Most important to us, besides encouraging tourism, we talk about it a lot on our website and in our marketing, but of course, sharing about Mount Bethel Retreat Center's rich legacy and their heritage here in King George. And when people come to the festival, we want them to feel at home, so we call them our jazz family. When they subscribe to our website, we do e-blast pretty often, especially in July and August, to keep them up to date on what's going on at Mount Bethel, what's going on in King George, and what jazz in the country is involved in. So as always, our core marketing elements are the performers, number one. A lot of them have local following, and people look for some of their favorite jazz musicians to be there. Of course, the location right on the Potomac is a big draw. Hearing about Mount Bethel Retreat Center is a big draw. People like to support a great cause. We draw all types, all ages of jazz enthusiasts, people who just love music on the water, those who just want a day to relax. And as we move forward, we will continue to network and engage more local community organizations, businesses, nonprofits, as well as reach out to those beyond. A lot of our sponsors have been outside of the King George, Northern Virginia area. And of course, we will continue with the jazz music workshop every year. So even talking with the band director at, at the high school and the principal, maybe we can draw in the middle school as well next year. It does take a village, and we really, really realize that our success is due to the commitment and the community support from the community. And so we list several here, and there's many, many more, who love jazz, who love King George, who love Mount Bethel, and just love supporting a great cause. And at the center of why we do what we do is to preserve the legacy that a lot of people still don't know about, and that's Mount Bethel Retreat Center. It's the right thing to do, we feel. Excuse me, I have a little frog in my throat. We are never shy to thank those that partner with us as sponsors, as friends, as patrons, friends being those who do business with us, and a lot of those sponsor as in-kind gifts, as well as discounts on services that they provide. Most importantly, we thank you. Most importantly, we thank you for your support every year. We especially thank Nick Miner and his staff, the Tourism Committee, for their support and guidance. And we just look forward to our fifth anniversary next year. We have decided to move it from August to September because it won't be as hot. So mark your calendar from September 28th next year. And we will be at Mount Bethel with more great music. So we thank you again. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Ms. Waters, thank you so much for coming out and providing the after-action report. I liked the heat map. That's kind of neat seeing where you were reaching, especially see there's on the West Coast, some traction there with, at least from the advertisement point of view. Do you know how far away people came from? Like, do you know the, you know?
There were a few from Pennsylvania. Of course, we had artists come and they bring their friends as well. New Jersey, there were handful. Most are in the local DMV area.
Certainly reasonable and understandable. But I was just kind of curious to see if anyone from out that far away made the trip that trip with, that'd be pretty cool if they did. But yeah, no, I really appreciate the information and coming in and sharing with the videos as well. Ms. Minder, did you have something?
Yes, you kind of covered it already. But reaching out to the middle school and even maybe opening something up for elementary school students. Because I don't know, especially with COVID, we had some interest drop off in the band pro, in our band program in the region, as seen as like a gold standard. So maybe, you know, an inspiration for these young folks to take up an instrument and have another activity than just a cellphone. If we had some hands-on with some of these performers teaching and maybe having a couple of instruments there so they could try things. Just throwing it out there because it seems like a great opportunity. Because I saw mostly kids that are in the marching band in that video. So opening up to more students might be a really nice inspirational, get kids to pick up an instrument. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stonehill?
Joan, Randy, Larry, thank you. You guys did a great job again. You know, I wish you all the best in the future. And I think September is a whole lot better than, I mean, I know it's some hot jazz, but you know, August hot jazz, that's pretty hot. I don't see any, do you have any idea on numbers of tickets and actually people that came? Maybe it's in here and I'm missing it, but?
We, it isn't in here. We have held steady with around 300 people there. Of course, not counting performer friends who tagged along with them, so.
So like 300?
Roughly about three, similar to last year.
Gotcha.
So we want to get to five.
Maybe we'll do that with a little cooler weather.
I think so.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to say thanks again. Y'all just did a great job. Looking forward to seeing what you have up your sleeve for next year.
I want fireworks, actually. But I don't know if we can get away with that.
Do we have any other questions for Ms. Waters? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Okay, we have a presentation from Tri-County City Soil and Water Conservation District now.
Howdy, howdy. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Sweet. My name is Madison Morgan. I'm with Tri-County City Soil and Water Conservation District. My district services City of Fredericksburg, Spotsylvania, Stafford and King George. We're actually going to be celebrating our 80th anniversary coming up next year. Thanks to y'all's support and y'all's support. So thank you guys so much. I kind of just have our annual report to share back with you guys. All this stuff is from FY23. Funny enough, too, I guess I'll add in just a real quick while we're waiting to get that up. We are a regulatory agency, or we're not a regulatory agency. We provide technical assistance, information, educational programs, volunteer opportunities and newsletters to citizens on aspects of water quality, non-point source pollution and stream health. You'd be amazed the amount of phone calls we get asking if we're a gym membership. So not sure where that comes out of things, but. Sorry. Awesome, yeah. So to start off on our annual report. Like I said before, we're not a regulatory agency. We provide technical assistance, that aspect of things. Yes, I think I talked about this one real quick. Sorry about that. These are our Board of Directors. For King George County, we have one seat open. And our King George representative is Ms. Janet Gail Harris. She's our treasurer. The way we operate, we are, oh, sorry about that. We operate under the supervision of the Board of Directors. They're elected unpaid officials. They all work, again, unpaid. Our district staff performs administrative, operational, technical, educational and public relations tasks. Right now, we have four staff members. We're working to kind of move our way up to six as our district has enlarged itself and gotten bigger. Our goals are, of course, the mission to provide leadership, educational and technical programs to assist all resource users to conserve, sustain and improve soil and water-related resources. And the vision is to be recognized as the community leader in focusing action, establishing partnerships to achieve soil and water conservation. We accomplish these goals through the help of a multitude of organizations. This is just a small kind of tidbit of the amount of different programs and partners that we do have. Some of the main ones include Department of Forestry, DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation, Friends of the Rappahannock, George Washington Regional Commission, the Lake Anna Civic Association, NRCS, the Potomac Watershed Roundtable, the Rappahannock River Roundtable, the USDA, the Virginia Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts and the Farm Service Agency. Of course, we couldn't do this again without y'all and y'all. So that little number 17, the big green blimp up there, you can see King George at the hook. That's the area that we cover. This map kind of displays there's 47 soil and water districts across the state. For 23 stats, we've reached 476 area students. These are just school-aged students, not including any of our adult programs. And to throw in, that is with functioning this year. I started back in June. The other education coordinator was only there for a few months. So this is going about eight months without someone with how our years are split up. King George had the 2023 Scholarship winner with Ms. Rebecca Miller. She's doing great in school, as well as our youth conservation camp attendees. We sent two students, one being from King George. So this is just a breakout of our locality contributions and other kind of contributions that we're getting from the state and then VCAP and our technical assistance. I would just like to thank you guys for your continued support in being our main supportive district. You know, y'all's support in rural development and keeping our land on our conservation efforts, it means a lot. And we thank you guys for that. So yeah, as you can see, King George County is the biggest blurb with $53,050. Yeah. We are helping through personnel, we're helping the district with personnel for technical assistance, our operations costs. Cost share payments, we've totaled out to $924,791.42. Future cost share payments at $557,690. And then our VCAP payments are coming in at $31,200, totaling our fiscal year '23 expenses at $1,802,184.43. So our King George stats, out of that total, you guys gave us $53,000. We turned that back into investing in. Y'all, of course, totaling out $233,000, little over that. Our biggest practice in this county is cover crops. We actually just wrapped up our last cover crop season that ended up, signups ended in October. So we're getting out now, starting up with site visits to make sure all of our producers are following protocol. The Virginia Conservation Assistance Program is VCAP. For those of you who may not be familiar with it, it is a urban program. Homeowners can kind of call us in if they have resource concerns or if they think they have resource concerns. Right now, we are actually partnering with Friends of the Rappahannock to handle all of our VCAP concerns. So you submit an application through us and it goes to them. And then they come out and see if you do have the concern. And then it all gets wrapped up. King George's biggest VCAP project this past year was a living shoreline. And the district paid out $30,000 to the homeowner, which is great. And just a little background, living shorelines are protected, stabilized coastal edge, made of natural materials, as plants, sand or rock. Unlike a concrete seawall or other hard structure, it doesn't really impede the growth of animals and it doesn't affect our wildlife as much. Living shorelines grow over time. So this is before installing that living shoreline project. As you can see, the seawalls kind of collapsed. The homeowner was having issues every time it rained or every time there was a storm that came along. More and more land was getting eroded. This is during our installation. And then after, you can see how everything was kind of sloped out. And from what I've heard, the homeowner has had great success with not losing as much, well, not losing hardly anything when we do get storms. So the prior number of 400-some students, that was just, like I said, our school-aged children. In total, we've reached 539 citizens. So not quite 100 with our adult education programs. In 2023, the Virginia Clean Farm Award for our district went to Dr. Frank Moore from King George. He has worked to perform many of our BMP's best management practices, including winter cover crops, precision nutrient management and no-till practices. He's constantly experimenting with different cover crops and management practices. He's really doing a lot down there. I went out there not too long ago and everything looks great, as well as powtain poses. It's great. So please get in touch with us. I appreciate you guys allowing me to come out and present all this stuff. And I appreciate the growth that agriculture is seeing in the community, as well as agritourism through all the different businesses. So thank you, guys.
Do we have any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Minder.
I just want to thank you. I haven't seen you in a long time. It's nice to see you again. And it's always great, class of 2018, to see a graduate find success and help bring, coming back to our community. We hear so many times about graduates leaving. And you came back and you're helping our community, especially in our agritourism. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Thank you so much. I appreciate the brief chat. Last of our presentations, we'll be moving on to public hearings. As I mentioned before, we are not going to be holding the Walnut Hills Development subdivision. Public hearing, so we'll move on to 1015. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised, receive public input regarding Department of Economic Development and Tourism's public hearing to consider the adoption of ordinances, establishing locations and economic development incentives for defense production zones. And we'll first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight, depending on the information received during public comments. Mr. Miner, I believe you have the presentation beforehand.
Pleased, Mr. Chair. So I have a quick report. I can give the presentation over again. Do you have that? If not, I can just give the report out.
I know you've given it, I think, five meetings in a row.
Right.
So.
I'll just read a quick summary. King George County is aggressively trying to attract defense production businesses that will support and complement. Naval Support Facility Doggerne and its tenants. King George has been a defense community for over a century. With the county's largest employer being the Department of Defense, King George has a unique opportunity to grow this industry sector with its existing workforce and infrastructure. At the July 11th Board of Supervisors meeting, the recommendation of additional provisions was requested to add further detail to potential conditions in which the Board of Supervisors can remove a defense production zone designation and a qualified business where a fallout of compliance with the county's zoning ordinance, as well as additional circumstances that the county could recall incentives provided to the business during this interim period. Those revisions were added to the ordinance with clear guidelines with the support from the county attorney's office. Additionally, at the request of the board, the department had a town hall on September 14th to answer questions and additional public concerns. There were no additional comments made at that town hall. So I'm happy to take any questions in regard to the defense production zone.
Do we have any questions from Mr. Miner before we open the floor for public comment? Okay, thank you, Mr. Miner.
Thank you.
In that case, we will open the floor for public comment at this time. This is for the development of incentives for technology production zones. Mr. Dinesh, do we have anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I apologize. I did say technology production zone. This is defense production zone. Skupka, thank you for pointing that out. I did misspeak. So this is for the defense production zones right now. I apologize. Floor is still open. Okay, and there was no one online? Did anyone have any correspondence in regards to this public hearing to be read in?
I read it earlier.
Yep. In that case, I will close the floor for public comment. I'll bring it back to the board for consideration.
I would like to, Mr. Chair, I would like to have data center removed from this ordinance.
All right, I'll ask my colleagues, how do they feel about that?
I agree.
I'm not in favor with moving forward with it. The data centers wouldn't really even apply from a capital expenditure perspective. They're going to be way over this, they're just not going to fit into it. And even if someone were, then they don't get it. There's nothing automatic about it. It's just something that can be made available if the board chooses to. I just don't want to carve it up a whole bunch and add in all these extra things just for no reason, really. But that's my take. I'll leave my other two colleagues to decide.
Mr. Chair, just to follow up, while they're looking it up. Why I bring this up is, and at state meetings and listening to people who are in the development and the business community, they like consistency. So by putting it in there, we're telling people we're interested in that industry potentially coming for these areas. And though we have some of the data, we already have one in one of those areas. But especially in the Shiloh area, I have heard from, they're not really interested in data centers being incentivized in the Shiloh district, especially in the area where the intersection of 205 and 301. So by having it in there, we're telling people we're interested. And I know, at least myself and Mr. Collins, we're not interested in entertaining that. So I think we're not being honest with businesses that might look at this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Stonehill, Ms. Kupka?
I have a motion. I move to adopt an ordinance to amend Chapter 14 Taxation of the King George County Code by adopting provisions to designate a defense production zone to incentivize private entities to invest in King George County in designated areas as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Move on to 1016. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised, receive public input regarding Department of Economic Development and Tourism. Public hearing to consider the adoption of ordinances, establishing locations and economic development incentives for technology production zones. We'll first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I'll bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight, depending on the information received during public comment. Mr. Miner, do you have anything further to provide as a staff report? I know this is really kind of hand in hand with the defense incentive zone.
Same verbiage, just add technologies on to it for the most part, so.
Thank you. In that case, I will open the floor for public comment upon 1016, which is the technology zone. The technology production zones. Mr. Dinesh, does anyone online to provide a public comment?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone receive any correspondence to enter into the record for this public hearing? Yep. The matter brought back to the board for consideration and discussion.
Mr. Chair, once again, would ask that the data center be removed from this technology zone. It seems that we're not really listening to the public at all. And once again, incentivizing something, we haven't even seen one yet and had the impact. So I would appreciate if we consider removing it.
Understood. Thank you, Mrs. Binder. Does anyone else have any other comments? Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, a motion.
Ma'am.
To adopt an ordinance to amend Chapter 14 taxation of the King George County Code by adopting provisions to designate a technology zone to incentivize private entities to invest in King George County in designated areas as presented.
Second.
No motion properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. 1017. Public hearing for ambulance fee structure. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised, receive public input regarding Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services. Public hearing, ambulance fee structure. Will first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. Board may or may not take action tonight, depending on the information received during public comment. Chief.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, good evening to each of you. Giving you a little bit of this presentation before, I want to give you a brief overview in case there's any questions from the audience here. So if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me and I'll try to give you an answer. This ambulance fee for service program was enacted back in 2007. Since 2007, we had one rate increase, which was in 2013. This year, Medicare, the Centers for Medicare Services, i.e. the federal government, provided a ambulance fee increase of 8.7%. The industry standard throughout the nation is to be 30 to 50% above the CMS fee schedule. We are currently at about 15% above the fee schedule. Additionally, there have been some changes in the operational procedures and workflows throughout the county. So we've had some changes that went along with the ordinance and the fee for the rules and regulation manual that goes hand in hand with the ordinance. There, and let me make this point, there are no recommended changes to the ordinance that would impact the county's compassionate billing policy or soft billing practices. Insured county residents would continue to incur no out-of-pocket expenses or fees. Fees for uninsured county residents would be reduced from a full liability to a 25% liability. Uninsured non-residents would continue to be responsible for the entire balance, and we would change the policy based on the household median income of being over $101,000 in King George. So here's the current rate structure. In short, King George is kind of in the middle between our surrounding localities. The recommendation is to move to the fee structure that's shown in this slide. This would put us at the middle of the, between the 30 and 50%, so right at 40% of the Medicare rates. We would increase the transportation mileage from $12 per mile to $13 per mile, and also add a consumable fee of our oxygen and different types of supplies that we use. We believe that these rates, that the fee changes would generate about, close to a half million dollars per year, if our historical tracking is accurate. The implementation of this new fee structure, we would recommend that that would go into effect on January 1st of 2024. So happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Do we have any questions for Chief before we open the floor for public comment? Okay. Thanks, Chief. All right. We will open the floor now for the public comment for the ambulance fee structure. Mr. Dines, do you have anyone online? Would like to provide public comment?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Does anyone receive correspondence in regards to this public hearing to be entered into the record? Okay. In that case, I will close public comment and we'll bring it back to the board for consideration and discussion.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion. I move to approve the revisions to the ambulance fee for service ordinance rules and regulation.
Second.
We have a motion probably seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Chief, I believe we have you for an action item as a follow-up to this one.
So, Mr. Chair, this action item would be to approve the rules and regulations that, where the fees are actually promulgated into. So recommendation would be to approve the rules and regulations.
Does anyone have any questions for Chief? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the rules and regulations as presented by Chief.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion probably seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No, I, I was just late on it.
So you're in favor? Okay. Chair votes aye, motion carries. All were in favor of the motion. Okay. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Miner, I believe we have you next for the Department of Economic Development Tourism TAC application sheets to sheets trail run.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Sheets to Sheets Trail Run is a unique and fun 14-mile charity race between King George Middle School Sheets and the Dogren Sheets on the Dogren Railroad Heritage Trail. This will be the seventh year. The race has gone from a local event to a regional event, drawing hundreds of runners, both in and out of state. The race is currently capped at 350 runners, and 2022, it sold out in 24 hours. Race Fund Adventures has requested $2,987 for advertising, outreach, and course logistics. New this year is the outreach program and scholarship program for younger and lower-income runners. In an effort to increase the opportunity and diversity of the participants, they have recruited a strong cadre of ambassadors specifically to promote this effort. The traffic management grant from last year that was not used will be used this year, and there is a contract in place with the new traffic management company. This grant will contribute to advertising, establishing four scholarships, covering the difference in the cost of the traffic management company, and improvement of the third aid station. After review, the TAC recommends that the BOS approve $4,000 funding for the Sheets to Sheets Trail Run event. Staff agrees with tax recommendations. And just as a quick update, this will be our first application of the year. The current grant TAC fund that we have right now is $64,646. The existing current fund balance is $165,002.
Thank you, Mr. Miner. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Miner about this application? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the Sheets to Sheets Trail Run Care of Race Fund Adventures TAC application in the amount of $4,000 from the TAC fund.
Second.
We have a motion probably seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Department of Finance, awards of goods and services agreement for the replacement of county enterprise resource planning ERP system. Ms. Cobb.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm here this evening with something I think we've all been waiting for. During the FY 2122 CIP, the Board of Supervisors approved the replacement of the county's financial management software. And during the process, the cost of the system was estimated at $701,410. This estimate was used for the appropriation of funds. The county entered into the agreement with Barry Dunn for consulting services to assist the staff with needs assessment and implementation, excuse me, of a new ERP. Barry Dunn has worked closely with the ERP replacement team and met with the staff throughout the county to determine our needs. Based on the requirements gathered from the county, Barry Dunn assisted with the drafting of an RFP. Proposals were received and evaluated. Four companies were invited to provide demonstrations of their systems during a two-week period in April of 2023. After the completion of the demonstrations, the committee again evaluated the companies with input from other major stakeholders. Reference checks were completed on all four companies, and one final evaluation was completed, and Tyler Technologies was ranked the highest for overall county needs. The committee, with the assistance of Barry Dunn, began negotiations with Tyler Technologies, and these negotiations also included the county attorney. A final not-to-exceed price has been provided to include the ERP, third-party software for human resources, and travel expenses. This total is $941,210. Major reasons for the increase include the hours that would be required for implementation based on the county department needs that exceed hours included in the estimate. Hourly rates also increased by $15 per hour over the estimate in 2021, and the implementation hours increased by 1,176. So with that, I am requesting that the board authorize the county administrator to take the following actions. Transfer $239,800 from CIP projects construction to replace capital hardware and software line. Issue a notice of award to Tyler Technologies in the amount of $941,210, and authorize the execution of a goods and services agreement with Tyler Technologies in the amount of $941,210, subject to approval as to form by the county attorney.
Any questions for Ms. Cobb?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Binder.
Thank you. I just want, to the public, that's a big number to throw out. And so I know this, but the public might not know this. How old is that technology? And?
It's historic. It's over 20-plus years old. It's to the point where our system, we can't toggle between fiscal years. We have a lot of issues. Everything is manual with this system.
And I say that because, you know, one of the things that folks would like is more transparency in documents and stuff on our website, but this is one of our challenges because you have hard copies in your office of things because it is not easy to go from one database to the other. And I know I have joked about your system, that it looks like it comes from the 1984 film War Games, because that's kind of the symbol. So the cost is high, but it's something we should have done a long time ago, and unfortunately we, it is here now, but I think it will help us to do much better, more efficient for our citizens, for our accounting and procedures, and giving more information out.
Yes, correct.
Any other questions for Ms. Cobb? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion. I move to authorize the county administrator to take the following actions. To transfer $239,800 from CIP projects construction to replace capital hardware software line. To issue a notice of award to Tyler Technologies in the amount of $941,210. And to authorize the execution of a goods and services agreement with Tyler Technologies in the amount of $941,210, subject to approval as to form by the county attorney.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
So my discussion point will be the $200,000 more than the estimate. Again, another thing comes in at more than has been estimated. Again, we're spending more money than we have agreed to spend. Just taking it out of a different pot. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cobb. County Administrator's report. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While we're bringing that up, I'll go ahead and talk about the main item on here is that it is my recommendation, I believe I have talked with everybody, my recommendation that you appoint Mr. Richard Stewart as your interim community development director for the county, and also the interim zoning administrator for the county. And that would be effective on the 30th of October. Ms. Lackey had given us the guidance on the interim zoning administrator appointment, and that he could serve in that role, even though he has not received yet his CZA. He will start that process immediately and could then sit for a test here very soon. We then are going to utilize some existing third-party relationships that we have with consultants that could back up Mr. Stewart. And if need be, if we run into a situation that requires that level of support for him, we will have that. Mr. Messler and Mr. Stewart have also interviewed a candidate, and they are working through a hiring process to bring somebody to start as soon as next week. So that'll be a senior planner position. So we're definitely being as responsive as we can to the situation. We wish Mr. Pankati good luck, and we wish he would not have wanted to go west, young man, to Culpeper County, or Culpeper, the town of Culpeper. And we certainly are appreciative of his service to us, and we thank him for that. And I know I wish him good luck in his new endeavor. And, but Mr. Stewart, I think, as I indicated to you all, had approached me about this idea, and, you know, I admire him for that, and I definitely believe that he will have the support of the board, and he understands things. He understands King George County, obviously, having lived here most of his life. So I'm very much looking forward to him stepping into that role, and I would appreciate your support. Couple items just to point out, you have some office closures. I think we pointed this out with the Service Authority. November 7th is Election Day, so the offices are closed. November 10th is Veterans Day, so the offices are closed. Then you have Thanksgiving holiday, the 23rd and the 24th, where the offices will be closed. Your next meeting because of Election Day is on the 14th at 6:30 here. We, I guess we're doing headliners now, is that correct, Ms. Fish? But for the agendas, we have, Mr. Beal is planning to be here on the 14th, and I think that's always a good meeting when you have Mr. Beal here to present information. The other item that would be on there would be the folks from broadband, from All Points Broadband. They indicated that they would be there on the 14th. The other items, just to let you know, holiday luncheon is scheduled for the 13th of December at the King George Parks and Recreation Citizens Center. And, Mr. Messler, would you want to just brief the board on the Making a Difference Award, and, you know, when we're going to initiate all that, and how that process will work?
Yes, we're coming up on the time when we start seeking nominations for our employee and our citizens awards. So it worked out well last year to do that through a link in a Google form. So we are going to do that process. Again, nominations will open up for both the citizens and the employee award. We will then have a group of employees review the employee nominations and make a recommendation for that award, and then you guys will review the citizens' award and make recommendations to who gets that award, and we'll celebrate both of those awards on the 13th. So that is the plan as it stands at the moment.
Mr. Chair, so in years past, this was always initiative of the Board of Supervisors to select the recipient of both the citizen award and the employee award. I'm not sure how last year played out where that didn't happen for both, but I think that it needs to be the will of the board, because this has always historically been the board's initiative. So I'd like to hear what my colleagues think.
Ms. Kapka, I actually agree on something.
It happens occasionally.
Yes, ma'am. And I have a motion after this goes through.
Ms. Binder?
I agree.
I would agree as well, Mr. Stonehill. Okay.
So we'll take all nominations.
So we'll take all nominations in and then present them to you all to select.
Thank you.
Mr. Granger, please.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to award another holiday of the 24th, which would be the Friday of Thanksgiving to the county employees.
It is a holiday, Mr. Collins.
The 24th or 23rd is Wednesday?
No, I believe the 23rd is Thursday. Thursday, and then the Friday, the 24th is also a holiday. Yes, sir. It's two days.
The day before would be a travel day, which would be the 20, what?
22nd.
22nd? So my motion would be the 22nd. So they'd have three days there for their family.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to hear what the fiscal impact is to the taxpayers, and any departments that are required, would still be required to provide services that day. So at this point, without further information, I would not be willing to move forward at this time.
I think that's a fair consideration. I think it is not an insignificant amount of money that it would end up being in total. I wouldn't mind getting that information. We could have it as an action item at the 14th, or a discussion item, one of the two. But I'll leave it to my colleagues to continue discussion. We'll still vote, obviously, since we have the motion that's been properly seconded. Go ahead.
I was going to suggest that, put it on the 14th, but if not, if that's too quickly to revisit it in December to maybe give that holiday, an extra day for the holidays.
Okay. Was there any other discussion before we vote?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So I withdraw my motion temporarily until the next meeting.
Okay.
So just to be clear, we'll provide you with the fiscal impact if you did have a holiday, and then all of the employees that would have to work still.
They get a holiday.
Yes, sir.
Get there, an added holiday to their...
We will bring it back for an item for you to consider on the 14th.
Right. We have such, you know, dedicated employees. We, this is, these are small things that we can do to be helpful, be with their family. Thank you.
Mr. Miller, did you have anything else for your report?
No, sir.
So do you need us to make a motion for...
I'm sorry. I would need a motion for Mr. Stewart to be named the interim zoning administrator and subdivision agent, correct?
That's effective October 30th.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
I have a motion. I move to appoint Mr. Richard Stewart Jr. the interim director of community development and the interim zoning administrator for the Department of Community Development effective October 30th, 2023.
Second.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Good luck.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Stewart. Thank you. Mr. Miller, did you have anything else? Okay. Ms. Bender, did you have something?
Or we start the closed session motion. I would just ask for some clarification on number two of the closed session. Can you put it in regular person speak, Lackey?
So at the prior meeting, there was consensus to approach the Rollins family concerning possible acquisition of the residual property adjoining the library. And I have some discussion with regard to that possible acquisition.
I appreciate that, because I actually had a couple residents reach out to ask more. So I just wanted to make that, you know, we all talk in legal speak, so it's nice just so that the folks can hear that. Thank you very much for the clarifying language.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion.
I have a question for Ms. Lackey.
Go ahead.
Ms. Lackey, so this piece of property, is there any governmental use to it?
So as you can see, the parcel either straddles or includes part of the right-of-way, but I defer to the discretion of the board if, you know, ultimately, this is an acquisition that the board is interested in making. But in order to negotiate, I need to have a confidential and frank discussion with board members on expectations and direction with regard to possible terms for acquisition.
So you can't answer that question in open session if it has any governmental use?
So you're seeing a GIS image on the screen, for those who are able to see the screen. The parcel in question is Tax parcel 24-160C. As you can see, it's a parcel that does not have, it does not appear to have development value as an independent standing parcel. So the question is, is it worth, you know, according to what terms may be agreed to resolve the fact that this kind of remnant parcel exists as a privately owned parcel? My understanding is that this parcel came to be known in approximately 2008, which was the time when parcels were consolidated for the library acquisition, and possibly based on surveyor errors in the past. There were prior, there were prior acquisitions by the Board of Supervisors, but for whatever reason, this parcel appears to have remained, at least under the records, as a privately owned parcel.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion.
But...
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed session for discussion of a proposed local incentive package for a major economic development project pursuant to the following authorities: One, Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A6, for discussion and consideration of investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the county and the EDA would be affected. Two, Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A39, for discussion of information subject to the exclusion by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3705.63, for economic development arising from proprietary business information provided pursuant to a promise of confidentiality and/or working papers or other information related to negotiation and bargaining concerning business sighting or expansion for which disclosure would adversely affect the financial interest of the county. And three, Virginia Code Section 2.2-37118, for discussion of specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice. I also move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed session for discussion or consideration of a compensation amount and terms for possible acquisition of real property in the Route 3 corridor, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3. I invite the county administrator, county attorney, assistant county attorney, and director of economic development and tourism as needed, because they are deemed necessary and/or their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of one or more of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712F.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Collins?
So the motion is to go in there for an incentive package, or an investment of public funds, where there's competition. My understanding is it's Amazon, so it's no competition. Also, proprietary business, there is no proprietary business that they have revealed to us or expect to reveal to us in any closed thing. And it would adversely affect the financial interest by going in there. We are adversely affecting the public interest. And then, thirdly, or fifthly, or whatever it is, the closed meeting for discussion of property is not for any governmental use. So I would disagree with that, too. Thank you.
So, Mr. Collins, did you want to recuse yourself? At the last meeting, you stated you were going to enter into negotiations for this property. It's obviously your decision. You're the one that would be liable if you were to have a personal interest in something and then conduct business on it as well. So I'll just leave it to you if, how you want to handle it. Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to state for the record from the minutes of the October 3rd, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting, on page 41, the board member in question stated, quote, "I'd like to buy that property myself. I've always wanted to buy it," end quote. The board member later stated on page 42, quote, "I'm going to enter in negotiations, too, so that's why I was asking for a motion." I could say, nay, I didn't know it was available for sale, end quote.
Well, thank you, Ms... Everybody else could read it, too. I understand what it says. Ms. Lackey already gave me a form that she decided that I should sign before I go in there. And I know exactly what I'm doing, and I don't need any of y'all's advice on what to do. I'm solely elected official, and I made the decision on my own. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion?
I just have one comment. I just wanted to state my displeasure with the closed meetings always about the performance agreement, because I think the citizens should be aware of it, and in the end, they should have all the information. And that's the only one I want to make a comment on. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We're in closed session. Chair of the time, motion carries. We're in closed session.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Ms. Kupka.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by a vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. We will certify by rule call. Ms. Bender?
So certify.
Mr. Collins?
Not certify.
Mrs. Kupka?
So certify.
Mr. Stonehill?
So certify.
Chair so certifies. We are back in open session. Do we have any other business to bring before the board?
I move to direct the county attorney to confer with Chairman Granger to negotiate compensation and terms for acquisition of the Rawlins parcel, subject to approval of any final agreement by the board as a future action item.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Collins?
So because I was in there, you all didn't want to discuss -- what you were in there for was for the discussion and consideration of compensation. So you wouldn't discuss the compensation because I was in there. So and then you're letting Mr. Granger negotiate when Ms. Lackey has been talking to these folks, but all of a sudden now Mr. Granger's going to be the negotiator so he can control the information as always. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes. I just wanted to throw out, and I should have thought of it in there, is maybe to just have Ms. Lackey continue the negotiations and bring it back to the board for a vote.
Okay. I'm amenable not being involved. It's not going to hurt my feelings if we just want to let Ms. Lackey handle it and bring it to the board with a recommendation. All right. Well, we do have a motion properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Say nay because I think it should just be Ms. Lackey.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Do we have any further business to bring before the board?
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to adjourn until Tuesday, November 14 at 6:30 here in the boardroom.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries. We're adjourned.